The meeting for the school board district of Putnam County Tuesday, December 18th, 2018 will now come to order. We will have our opening pledge by Mrs. Holly Pickens and our invocation by Pastor Dan Phillips of Francis Baptist Church. And then I need to make this announcement in consideration of members of the public that are here for the naming of the facilities. We are moving items L3 and 4 to after the invocation. So right after the invocation, we will go into that portion of the meeting where we will recognize those that the schools' facilities are being named in honor of. There may be one slight change, provided the family of Mr. Eubanks is not here, and we'll make that known. Our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, at this time of year where schoolchildren are thinking about being at home on school break, this school board has chosen to meet. Their heart and their passion, Father, is not only just the education of our students, of our children, but, Father, the maturing, the growing up, the preparing to meet all of the challenges that tomorrow has for them. So, Father, I ask that you grant to this school board, you grant, Father, to all of those that support them wisdom, guidance, passion for this job, and help them, Father, with clarity of mind and purpose in thought, deal with all of the issues that come before them today. Father, this is not an easy job. It is not an easy task, but these people have chosen to put themselves to the voter's decision to be here, to minister, to manage our school system.
Yes.
So, Father, grant all that we ask to them in Jesus' name.
Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. That's the Dan. Okay, at this time, we are going to call the committee that met to go over the renaming of the facilities and do their presentation at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few weeks back, the idea to rename, or I think I should more appropriately say, name a couple of our district facilities, and I don't want to use the word rename, because one of them is the former Mosley Elementary School, which is now across the street, and it currently doesn't have a name, so we just kind of refer to it as the old Mosley.
At one time, it was the former E.H. Miller School.
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's correct. So it's had several different names. So right now, it's kind of a school without a name. The second facility was the agriculture farm out in Francis, and we kind of referred to it as the Francis Ag Farm, but it's also an extension of the Palaca High School Ag Farm. So the two kind of just sit out in limbo, and no one really knows what to call them, but there are two very distinguished gentlemen who served pretty much as lifelong educators in our community, and the idea to rename these facilities after these fine gentlemen was brought before us. And so by district policy, I have to form a committee, and then we have to meet at least twice. We have to hear testimonials. We have to allow for public input, and there's a lot of rules surrounding it and tied to it. But suffice it to say, after hearing lots of heartwarming testimony and spending time trying to get the wording just right, we came up with what we believe is a great recommendation and a proposed proclamation for you guys tonight. Our committee has chosen a spokesperson, and she's a bit of a legend in her own right. Ms. Cynthia Asia is a lifelong educator and resident of Putnam County. So, Ms. Asia, would you come forth?
Thank you. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt just a minute? I think I'll point out to you that the family of John Eubanks, I don't believe, has arrived yet.
Okay.
So, at your discretion, if we want to do the Mr. Thomas first, and then maybe delay the one for Mr. Eubanks until the family gets here.
I can do that. I'm flexible.
Thank you, Ms. Asia.
I've texted one of them that they need to get to the meeting, but I'm sure they're doing the best they can.
Okay. I am so honored to be, to have been selected and to just be a part of this process. And before I get into the details, I want to just ask those members of the committee that are present today, if you will just please stand, because we worked very hard, very diligently. Thank you so very much. We met a couple of times. We had very healthy discussions, very healthy exchange. We didn't always agree in the beginning, but I'm fortunate to have worked with such a great group, is that we actually came up unanimous on everything that we did. And in order to not delay anything, I just want to first share a quote from Aristotle. He once says that "The honors and rewards fall to those who show their good qualities in action." And if we think about why we're here today, that, to me, kind of sums it up. We did ask for testimonials, and I'm going to share testimonial first for Mr. William McKinley Thomas. His daughter wrote a beautiful testimonial, and I must preface them all, I will not be reading the testimonials in its entirety, because some of them are pages, but I don't want to, I don't want to offend anyone, and since I'm looking right at his daughter, I would like to just say that.
Give her some cleaning.
These are some testimonials from his daughter. She says that my father, William McKinley Thomas, pursued a degree in agricultural education at the University of Florida, and he also received his master's degree in public administration. After graduating, he became a teacher at Mellon High School. He started the first FFA chapter in Putnam County. He enlisted in the Army during World War II. He enlisted in 1943, and because of his degree in agriculture, he was sent to New Caledonia, where he was in charge of all of the food grown for our soldiers in the South Pacific. He returned to his position at Mellon High School in 1946. At that time, the superintendent was Mr. Lou Barstow. He was planning to retire and ask, she says, "My father," if he would consider running for the position. He did. He was elected in 1948, and he was elected four terms for a total of five, re-elected four terms for a total of five terms as superintendent here in our great county, which is longer, as she says, than any other superintendent in Putnam County's history. Mr. Thomas, during his time as superintendent, looked at the many different schools and the structure of the schools that were here in Putnam County, and one of his great things that he's known for is taking several of those one-room community schools and consolidated those schools and began to make larger student populations at the schools. He was also instrumental in bringing St. John's River Junior College to Palaca, as the Department of Education in Tallahassee was looking at several other communities at the same time, which to place it. He was also asked to be the first president of the college. I did not know that, but turned it down to continue to serve Putnam County as superintendent. After serving superintendent for 18 years, he resigned that position just to take another position as the job of Dean of College Development and Services at St. John's River Junior College, where he worked until he retired. He was not big at retiring. He didn't, he didn't understand the definition. Right after that, she says that Dad was called by Superintendent John Gaines to see if he would consider working, working as the assistant principal at Interlaken High School, which he did for several years, and then he retired again. Then, he was asked to be principal at Palaca Central High, and this was during the term of, and I'm paraphrasing right now, the term, I mean, it was during the time of integration. So he was selected by the superintendent to become the principal at Palaca Central High School, where he worked until 1977, and then he learned what retirement was. He retired for good, she says, this time. Then she went on to list several accomplishments during his tenure as superintendent, back starting in February 8th of 1950, and it goes right on through February 7th, which I thought was really close there, 1966. That's a long term there. But he, according to his, to her mother, she said that "My father devoted much time to studying the best educational systems in the country, and as a result, he incorporated the most desirable features of these systems into our schools with excellent effort. My father devoted his life to public service. Most sincerely, Jane Thomas Crawford." And I would like to read this. On December 11th, 2018, "Dear school board members, the members of the school facilities naming committee have convened, and we unanimously recommend the former Mosley Elementary School located at 1001 Hussin Avenue, Palaca, Florida, to be renamed as the William M. Thomas Center for Workforce Development. School facilities naming committee, Don Hershey, Superintendent Rick Surancy, Assistant Superintendent Thomas Bowling, and the other members, John Chastain, Renee Huff, John Theobald, Cindy Earhart, Skeet Alford, and of course, Debrina Rice. She did a lot of work helping us. She pulled this together. And of course, yours truly, this is our recommendation to you today."
Wow.
Okay, so if she reads the resolution. If she will read the resolution. I don't have the resolution.
Resolution.
Okay.
Proclamation, we got it right here.
Sandy's got a copy.
Probably. I'd like to clarify one thing as well. Ms. Crawford had no idea that this was something that we, some of us had talked about, and this kind of caught her from left field, so she was in no way involved in this, and you can understand why she, well, she cries easy anyway, particularly if a child is putting on a ceremony or something, but this, this was no, in no way her doing, so I want to let people know that.
And we're going to ask Mrs. Thomas if you will come up along with Mrs. Crawford, if you will come to the front.
Just a reminder, we need to vote on this, too.
Yes.
Oh, do we need to vote?
Oh, so we need to probably vote first before we do this.
It's up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. Hearing the reminder from the superintendent at this time, we will first have.
We're clarifying something here.
Okay.
If you give us one second, whether Ms. Crawford should abstain or not.
I don't know.
There's no personal gain from it, so I don't think there would be.
And we don't have to have it put to motion or anything.
Yeah. Yeah, I would.
And then we'll, we'll get a motion.
That's no problem.
I'd be happy to abstain if there's any question.
We'll just let him tell us.
And I would say, while we're waiting on the board attorney, is that during the presentations of the resolutions, that was a very, very touching time for us, because we tried to hold back tears, and then some of the family members, especially of the other family as well, because Ms. Thomas, I mean, I mean, Ms. Thomas. Ms. Crawford was not present, but anyway, she sent her letter, and it was a very, very moving time, so we really and truly struggled with it just to get, make it through that part, and then the other was just regular work.
I know Cynthia remembers a lot as well as I, but Mr. Thomas was a, I mean, he was always the superintendent when I was a kid, and John Theobald was in school together with us, and we always just, that's all we ever knew, and every class photo had Bill William Thomas's name, and he was a man I wanted to be like. He and Jim Holt, John Gaines, Mr. Overturf, they all set good examples, and I just, I think about he hollering at Scott and I when we didn't do right, Jane, and I, I know he knew we were doing.
He would holler at me.
He and Mr. Eubanks, before they get here, he and Mr. Eubanks were very close turkey hunters friends.
Yes, they were. Very close friends.
And I think he hired Mr. Eubanks.
He did. He did. And it was interesting to me that they were both, they started out in ag.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That part I did not know. It was a learning opportunity for me.
Would there be any harm if she just abstained from the vote?
There wouldn't be. I was looking at our policies and procedures on point, and according to policy 4129, 3129, 1129, and 4210, it appears that all of the concerns about conflict of interest deal with a financial gain. I do not believe that there's any financial gain to the naming of a school facility, so in my opinion, it would be permissible for Ms. Crawford to vote.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee and wholeheartedly support the naming of this facility for, one of the best things that I've seen happen in many years would be the formation of the William M. Thomas Workforce Development Center for the people of Putnam County.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we get a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. David Bucker, second by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same sign. Okay, aye, seven. Five, zero. If you will, Ms. Asia. Yes, the resolution, William M. Thomas. Whereas William M. Thomas dedicated an abundance of years of his life serving students and families of the Putnam County School District, and whereas William M. Thomas also dedicated time and effort educating the youth about agriculture and serving as the superintendent of Putnam County School District, and whereas students, community members, coworkers, and the Putnam County School District desire to show their admiration, love, and respect for William M. Thomas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Putnam County School District authorizes the naming of the former Mosley Elementary School located at 1001 Hussin Avenue, Palatka, Florida, be renamed the William M. Thomas Center for Workforce Development, adopted this 18th day of December 2018 by the Putnam County School District in regular session at Palatka, Florida, signed by Sandra Giliard, Board Chairperson, Atess Richard M. Surancy, Senior Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, but I'd really like to thank the committee who worked so hard on this. I know that, you know, you did a lot of work, and I appreciate it so much. I'm so honored. My daddy loved students. He loved educating students. I can remember him going all over the state to teach parliamentary procedure, and as any of you who witnessed any of the school board meetings while I was chairman, I did not get those genes from him. It was not my forte.
True.
Yeah, because I didn't know how to deal with him was the main thing. But this is such an honor. I wish my brother Scott were still here on this earth to see this happen, because he would be thrilled. My daddy was a wonderful man, and I think it's so wonderful, because he and Mr. Eubanks were such good friends. My daddy hired John, and they did a lot of turkey hunting together back in the day. So I think it's just wonderful that both of these wonderful men are being honored this way. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I think it's kind of interesting, too, that the building that we're naming after Mr. Thomas is also going to be the site of St. John's River State College.
Right.
As you know, they're leasing that structure from us starting this year, and of course, he helped start the college, so how appropriate that that building is named in his honor.
And I believe he, he was superintendent when they built Mosley School.
He was.
Right. Very good.
That's even better.
So be fitting. At this time, I think the Eubanks family did come in.
Is everybody here?
John Allen back there?
Yeah, this is all in a second.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Asia, if you will come back.
Good.
Julie's here.
Thank you. Don't touch that.
Don't touch it.
I'm just giving some instructions to my former boss.
I think you were my boss, Mr. Thomas.
And this gives me great pleasure, again, in sharing with you the, some of the testimonials. There were several testimonials. I will not be reading them in its entirety, but I will definitely try to highlight as much as possible today. And this first one, which I did not ever know that Mr. Eubanks was called Nandy, and I thought I'd start out with his personal family, from, this one comes respectfully from Nicole Owens. She is here, and she is his granddaughter. And it took a lot for her to read this, and I knew Mr. Eubanks personally, too, because he was friends with my mom and Dad, because my mom was a vocational teacher as well. And so I promise to try to keep a straight face. Nicole says that she started, that Mr. Eubanks started his career here as an agriculture teacher at Palaca High School, then further advanced to retire as a director of vocational education and career education. While educating our young, he was also the leader of a group of young men in the Future Farmers of America, better known as FFA. While working with his students, he led the group to two state championships for parliamentary procedure. While serving our school district, he also took office as a county commissioner for 16 years, from 1978 to 94. Throughout his years, dating back to 1968 in Palaca, he spent his mornings, days, weekends, and even some nights tending to his garden. He was a farmer, and farmers, we know, are selfless, humble, disciplined, wise beyond recognition, and can be identified by some as a seed planter. Our Nandy, John A. Eubanks, was the definition of a seed planter, not just literally, but also spiritually. When I think of those within our community that we have the opportunity to highlight, he is one that would not want the recognition, and honestly, would not even realize the impact that he had on countless lives within our community, but is beyond deserving. While our Nandy was in the hospital as well as hospice, I had the opportunity to watch countless men and women walk in and out of the door. These people, the people who walked through his door, were people starting from age five all the way to 90-plus. Each person would tell some stories of, and some sort of unspoken respect of the man they knew and needed, and they knew that they needed it. They also, she says, "I listened to them share their stories of him spanking them in their classroom when they knew they needed it and still loved him always. I listened to those who worked with him, who I still, to this day, couldn't imagine, due to his level of demands and things happening on the side of the right now, share with him how much they loved and respected him." She says that he was a humble man, one full of integrity. What he said was his word, and his word was good. He saw within, not of outward appearance, he was a loyal, giving beyond measure, and had a true, genuine love for our community. And when you think of Putnam County, you think of an individual like him. Those who are silent but speak where need be, giving but not looking for it to be broadcasted, loving without the expectation of anything in return, grace when it does not make sense, an ear when you feel like no one else may listen, advice that is true but not always what we may want to hear, doing what is right but not always popular, humble beyond belief. Respectfully, Nicole Owens." And she's there in the audience. His son, Brian Eubanks, also did a testimonial. He said, "My dad was hired by Bill Thomas." Most people knew him as Bill Thomas and not William Thomas. They all felt very close to him. But he said, "My dad was hired by Bill Thomas to teach agriculture at Palaca High School in 1955. My dad was an assistant county ag agent from 1962 to 1966." He says, "I laugh now, but he worked this field, helping others with agriculture-related problems, right up to his death in 2018. My dad made a positive difference in our world. He was a leader, teacher, and giver to our community. Not sure I've ever known anyone who knew more people than he did. He left a positive mark on many. I have another one here from Jimmy Holt Simons. I don't think she's here today, but she did some research. She reached out in the community, and this is what other people think of your, of your John and our John. I think of him as our John. Eubanks. According to Jimmy Simon, she says, she gave statements from five of Mr. Eubanks' personal friends and coworkers, and what it did, it showed a thread of personal relationship he so comfortably established with others, and the professional image that he projected through his work in the city of Palatka, county of Putnam, and an influence reaching far beyond our state of Florida through his impact with students. Mr. Eubanks had both a bachelor's and a master's degree from the University of Florida. He served in the United States Army. At Palaca High School, he taught vocational agriculture from 1955 to 62, served as assistant county agriculture agent. He also led the Putnam County School District as Vocational Education Director from 1966 to 1993. Lyle Buck, she says, said, and he was, Lyle Buck was a former Internet Technology Director. He said, "Because of his never-ending commitment to the vocational program and agriculture, the programs he supervised achieved great things. He became a personal consultant, not only to former students but to local farmers and gardeners throughout our community." Dwayne Kraus says that John knew what was occurring in programs he supervised, because he visited, observed, and encouraged high-quality programs. He was not a desk supervisor and was not insecure about finding other experts when needed to ensure progress. John Gaines, former superintendent of Putnam County, says that he was involved in civic organizations, including Road Heaver's Boys Ranch and the Putnam County Fair. John was a devoted family person, husband, father, and grandfather. Jimmy Simons herself said that she only worked with him through the Putnam County Recreation Committee, but she says that he led by the book, and he used his hands-on approach. John Kircher, Joan Kircher. Joan Kircher, I'm sorry, Joan Kircher. She was a former secretary for the Vocational Education Department. She says, "His character was impeccable. His morals were the highest, and he was very trustworthy. He was committed totally to the involvement in this community. He was very generous. He was more knowledgeable than he let others know. He was very humble but very knowledgeable. If he didn't know something, he would research and find the answer. He had a great sense of humor." Joan Kircher. I'm sorry, that was all from Jimmy Simons, but she did her research and reached out to others in the community. This one comes from Karen Hughes, a former educator here in Putnam County as an administrator. She says that, "How I first became aware of who John Eubanks was, John was a supervisor of vocational education. But I can tell you, the vocational teachers at Palatka South High saw him as their advocate for vocational education." She also says that John Eubanks was an advocate for all teachers. He would listen to concerns and take those concerns to the proper people. She says, "Later when John became the county commissioner, she realized that he was an advocate for Putnam County. He was always willing to listen, but he did not get angry even if you did not agree with him. And when he became, when she became a high school principal, John Eubanks was still an advocate for public schools. He offered his help but never, ever forced his opinion. Sincerely, Karen A. Hughes." Those are some of the testimonials. We had some verbal testimonials. But those are very touching, and I'm glad you all gave us the opportunity to share some of those, and especially so that the family could hear those because now you know how other people felt about him. Now, I'd like to give you our recommendation. Dear School Board members, the Members of the School Facilities Naming Committee have convened and we unanimously recommend Francis Agriculture Farm located at 169 Cricket Avenue, Palatka, Florida, to be renamed as the John A. Eubanks Agri Science Center at Francis. The Members of the School Facilities Naming Committee have convened and we unanimously recommend Palaca High School Agriculture Farm located at 302 Mellon Road, Palatka, Florida, be renamed as the John A. Eubanks Agri Science Center at Palatka High School. School Facilities Naming Committee, and they're the same persons. Thank you very, very much. And it was a pleasure but also an honor to have had the opportunity to present, and especially for the great committee. And I have to give kudos again to DeBreece Rice as well as to Mr. Bowden. I'm telling you, he led the way that you all.
Skeet Hoffman was on that committee as well.
Yes, I named him.
Okay.
And I just wanted to publicly thank Ms. Asia and the committee as well. I just can't express, what you heard was the abbreviated version of the testimonials, but it was a lot, and it was a big job, and it was done after hours. And, you know, some are lucky enough to be retired, but that doesn't mean to say that they don't have a lot going on in their lives. And they gave a lot of their time for these very willing causes, and we appreciate it very much.
At this time, we're entertaining a motion from the board.
Well, I'll go ahead and wholeheartedly make a motion that, I mean, this is tough for me because these men were both idols of mine. But that we make a motion to accept the committee's recommendation on the facility at the Francis Ag Farm and the Palaca High site of their ag farm for the renaming of the, which is above and beyond what we had originally requested. But the committee together felt like you could not, you could not separate the name from the two facilities. So that we accept the committee's recommendation and move forward.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. David Buckles, seconded by Jane Crawford, that we accept the recommendation of the renaming committee. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. Passes 5-0. At this time, we ask Ms. Asia and if the family would please come to the front and let us have the resolution read. Jenna Allison.
Come on, baby.
We want the whole family to come on up, everyone that's present.
Look at these little girls.
Such a beautiful family. Now I'll share the resolution. Resolution, John A. Eubanks. Whereas John A. Eubanks dedicated an abundance of years of his life serving students and families of the Putnam County School District, and whereas John Eubanks dedicated time and effort educating the youth about agriculture. He also served as county commissioner for 16 years. And whereas students, community members, coworkers, and the Putnam County School District desire to show their admiration, love, and respect for John Eubanks, now therefore be it resolved that the Putnam County School District authorizes the naming of the Francis Agriculture Farm located at 169 Cricket Avenue, Palatka, Florida, be renamed the John A. Eubanks Agri Science Center at Francis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Putnam County School District authorizes the naming of the Palatka High School Agriculture Farm located at 302 Mellon Road, Palatka, Florida, be renamed the John A. Eubanks Agri Science Center at Palatka High School. Adopted this 18th day of December 2018 by the Putnam County School District in regular session at Palatka, Florida. Signed by our Board Chairperson, Sandra Gill Yard, and Superintendent Richard M. Surancy Sr., better known as Rick Surancy.
I told you, you won't say if you were.
Jerry, anybody want to say anything at all?
Joy, do you want to say?
Yeah, you're good.
And I'm sorry the guys couldn't be here, but they have none banking job to work.
Thank you, Jerry.
It's understandable. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, and moments like this are well-deserving. In my church, I elder call these moments those feel-good moments. And even though these are tears, they're tears of joy of having had a family member to do some of the great things that I've heard. I'm too young to have known any of these that they're talking about. But it's just great. And again, we thank you for having shared, your loved one, because when they give of themselves, something else, you know, kind of gives way. Not go lacking, but has to give way and share, and we do thank you for that. At this time, I, next item of business will be presentations. The first one will be by Superintendent Rick Surancy, the Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Model School Presentation from James A. Long Elementary. Following that one, we will have the recognition of the, well, we'll take that one next.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And before I present, I just want to thank Mr. Bowden and his staff for all the hard work and time they put in, and the committee on the Facility Naming Committee. And something we don't do every day, but they spent time and researched the procedures and also, great job, Mr. Bowden. If I could ask Ms. Hestrom, Ms. Adams, and Mr. Stevens to step up front for just a minute. I want to recognize James A. Long Elementary. And let me just read a couple of items here, and I'm gonna let Mr. Stevens hold this banner up. Do y'all want to stand here and hold the banner up? And let me read a little bit of information that Mr. Stevens provided me. James A. Long Elementary is being recognized by the University of South Florida for being a model school for the PBIS. Basically, the Positive Behavior Support. Can you see that? They're behind there somewhere. Anyway, this is a program that identifies James A. Long as a school that has demonstrated improvement, school-wide Tier 1 student outcomes, as well as equitable student outcomes as a result of the Tier 1 PBIS implementation. They exemplify high levels of Tier 1 PBIS implementation fidelity. They agreed to serve as a demonstration site. And they also agreed to share resources and artifacts that showcase best practices for Tier 1 implementation. And Mr. Stevens also told me that we are now 100% participation across our entire district as far as Positive Behavior Support. And this is what we do to encourage positive behavior. You know, students can't learn unless there's good behavior in class. And doing that at the Tier 1 level, we promote positive behavior. Instead of punishing negative behavior, we try to promote positive behavior. So congratulations to James A. Long Elementary. And thank you, Mr. Stevens, for your leadership. And thank you for your leadership, Ms. Hestrom and Ms. Adams.
Wonderful job.
The next item will be our recognition of Interlockin Elementary School employees for assisting a student that was choking.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Ted Hangle, our new principal at Interlockin Elementary, and Kelly Gilfle to please step up to the front. And we're gonna recognize two of their employees who showed some heroism, that's fine right there, heroism in the line of duty. Mr. David Watson and Audra Hill, two employees from Interlockin Elementary. Please come up to the front and be recognized. They actually assisted a student in the cafeteria who was actually choking, and they helped save this student's life. And that's something that we're not called on every day in school, but you know what? Student safety and well-being is the most important thing. So, we want to recognize them with two certificates and going above and beyond the call of duty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Next item of business, the presentation of awards for Computer Science Week from the Foundation for Rural Education Excellence. Shane Fairbain, Supervisor of Instructional Technology from NEFA.
As Shane comes up, I want to just kind of offer a plug to the schools who are going to be honored here today. December 3rd through 9th was Computer Science Week, and Susan Gaborio got us all together and created a really grand plan for the week of computer science. I want to thank our IT department. They were instrumental in that plan. We created videos every day. For the first five minutes, we showcased whether it was our robotics clubs at the elementary level, the middle school or the high school robotics club that was in the paper today. We highlighted some careers throughout the week in Putnam County related to computer science. And then the best thing is that every day, schools were encouraged to have their students work an hour in programs that were provided to them and to do things around that content. And the schools that participated the most at each level are going to be honored today by Shane. But we rounded out the week with the school that didn't the most, and they tweeted out the pictures and what the kids were doing. They actually got visited and did a live broadcast with Georgia Pacific's IT department. They came and answered questions for our students. And we were able to broadcast that live through the district. Thanks again to our IT department. So, as Shane awards our schools today, I want to say that was a great week by all here in Putnam County.
Thank you, Laura.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize some of these students and the schools specifically that participated in Computer Science Education Week. And just some statistics to kind of help you out, the reason why this is so important. Right now, there's over 22,000 open positions for computer sciences. And we will only graduate about 2,300 students to fill those. So, igniting the passion for students in the computer sciences and letting them know that it's not as intimidating is really beneficial, and we appreciate your support. And so, I want to recognize, again, the Foundation for Rural Education Excellence, which helped provide the opportunity to both give this recognition and also a small monetary reward so that they can do some recognition for the students who participated, and also secured some grants so that we can continue to offer computer sciences opportunities for students in rural areas that they might not have opportunity to participate in otherwise. So, without further ado, and just loving all of the positive energy today. I'm proud to be PCSD. We have a couple here, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Stout at Palaca High School. Funny, I'm not used to calling you Mr. Stout.
Great, how you doing?
And Ms. Michelle Higginbotham from CH Price Middle School. And is there anyone from Middleton Burney Elementary School?
Ms. Frances will come.
That's my old school. I love it. And Mr. Stouts as well. Oh, I know. It's okay. I'll take some selfies later on. So, thank you all so much for your support, and we hope to continue to provide these opportunities for you in the future.
Thank you.
Do we want to get everybody together real quick? Can we do that? Shane?
Yes, sir.
Can we get everybody together?
See, I got my picture.
Get everybody together. Somebody, Mr. Stevens, won't feel bad.
Alright, one, two, three. Do it without breaking the camera. One, two, three. Here we go.
Yeah, thanks.
Our next item of business would be the public comments. And because we moved so many things around, we want to ask at this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Is there anyone? If not, we will now move to our consent agenda. We will start with Mr. Buckles.
Madam Chair, I feel very comfortable with the agenda today.
Okay, so you're not pulling anything?
No, ma'am.
I also, I had a few questions. They were all answered, so I'm good.
Okay, and I have none. Mr. McInnis?
F3, can we resolve that? Yes, sir. So, on Agenda Item F3, there was an expulsion of a student, and the name of the school was inadvertently typed incorrectly. It was a Scrivener's error. So, with a motion to approve the consent agenda, if you could also make as part of that motion an approval of F3 with the appropriate school name for the expelled student.
Okay, alright.
That'll be made by Mrs. Corman.
Okay, alright.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept and approve the consent agenda along with the F3 adjustment that the Ford Attorney suggested.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Buckles that we accept the consent agenda and with the correction that will be made by Mrs. Carman. And it was seconded by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. The item... The item passes 4-0. Having no items for the emergency session, we will now move to the next item for business, discussion of new business. Consensus to advertise amendment to policy number 8420.
Advertise.
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 Okay. Item number two, consensus to advertise amendment to policy number 6330.
Advertise.
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 Okay. And if you can recall, Items 3 and 4 of L were moved up to the beginning of our meeting to accommodate the families. At this time, we will entertain the reports from the committee. We'll start on my right with Mr. McInnis.
I was really encouraged by the actions and directions of the district, the way they've responded to our safety and the well-being of our students. Just for example, last Friday, the Fortify Florida app was initiated actually through via an email and as well as the robocall. And I've heard about it, checked it out, and it's just a, it's an excellent way to let people be informed and to do the right thing by reporting any kind of suspicious activity. I just think that's a heads up, they're moving in the right direction. I've enjoyed some excellent Christmas programs at QI Roberts. They had their band there, they had their chorus, which I never knew they had a chorus. It was outstanding. And I attended the Putnam County Honors Band, which they're gonna perform again in March, and that was just excellent. From my understanding, they had two rehearsals and did an excellent job. And I've enjoyed a couple of Christmas programs at Melrose and Interlockin Elementary, and just I know everybody's getting ready for Christmas break. Thank you.
Mr. McInnis, thank you. We'll start, Mrs. Harley.
Well, I got to go to the terrific kids at Middleton Bernie today, and it was, it was a lot of fun and a lot of smiles, and it was really neat to see so many children of, I taught their parents, and it was just a really neat thing. Mr. McInnis and I helped at Browning Pierce. We wrapped presents in their Santa shop last week, and that was a lot of fun. And again, a lot of very interesting gifts were purchased, and the kids really had fun. And then I'm going to the program at Miller Middle School Thursday, and I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and it's been a wonderful 2018. I'm looking forward to 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
Well, I, my grandchildren keep me quite busy. I should have been at James A. Long the last two days having lunch with some of my grandchildren, and I've got one steady calling from QI Roberts right now wanting something. So my, what I really wanted to report on is I did serve on the expulsion committee this morning, and we had some, some serious matters that we took care of, and it's never a pleasant thing to do, but I think, I'm proud of our committees because I think they're sending a strong message that we want to have safety and order in our schools. And in spite of what you read in some of these state studies where they try to correlate data as far as having safe or unsafe schools, it doesn't, none of it has a correlation on whether your school's safe or not. It's the craziest thing I've ever heard, but it's just part of what we're into in education in, in America right now. So anyway, kudos to our principals and assistant principals. They put their, in the course of a day, like the choking of the student a while ago, they will inadvertently sometimes make the right decision, and sometimes they'll make another decision that may turn out all right, but there's never a perfect thing to do. They do the best they can, and they, they go on, and they're subject to ridicule, and it's a tough job. I admire our people who work so hard each and every day throughout, whether they're bus drivers and all. I know each of you do as well. I'd just like to tell them, have a Merry Christmas as well. And I'm done.
Okay. I'd just like to compliment and to, well, acknowledge the all-county football, Jim McCool Football Banquet participants and all of the various students that were there being recognized for, for what they had done on the football field. And it couldn't have been named after better person, Jim McCool, and we thank them for that. I did get an opportunity, first time ever, for the FFA judging of extemporaneous speaking, and I just want to send kudos out to Susan Helwick. Every student that came in there, whether they were from Putnam County or not, she gave them a word of encouragement before they spoke and afterwards. And during my morning devotion, it talked about how the fear is there, but a kind word can relieve and remove all those fears. And the things she said to those students at the end, their faces lit up. And I just want to say publicly to her, the words of encouragement meant so much to those students. The final thing, in today's paper, the editorial, the sheriff of Pinellas County, this was the headline for the editorial, "Insight Gives Sheriff Different Perspective on School Safety." How he, at one time, was totally against having guardians in the school, armed people in the school other than officials, police-trained officers. But he said after he had watched every segment of that shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, and he, some of the, the things that he described were variographic, meaning there were five instances, he said that that shooter could have been taken down had someone else been armed. He talked about how the aide or the teacher was shot twice and tried to pull himself to safety as the gunman walked up on him, saying if he had something, he probably could have taken him down and spared all of those lives. The reason I brought that up is because that was a hard time for our board. It really was when we were trying to decide which way Putnam County School District should go. And I thank God that we erred on the side of the safety of our children and what we felt was in the best interest. No, it was not an easy job, and we got a lot of ribbing and ridicule from some, but I would rather have our children at least in the hands of someone that could possibly prevent them, their lives from being taken. And so with that, all else as well.
Speaking of Marjory Stoneman Douglas, as time continues to pass and more reports are generated, and many are in draft form, we are continuing to look at that with the superintendent and identify ways, any additional policies or procedures that would be appropriate for our district, as every district in the state right now is reviewing based on the, the facts that are still coming forward from the detailed analysis of minute by minute what, what happened at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. And so, but that's something that we are very much on top of right now. Also, Legal Department, in the last couple of weeks, we helped with a Best and Brightest legal question, a yearbook naming issue, and so things have been busy.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Madam Chair, just, we're approaching the season for the legislative session, and the committees will start meeting next month, and of course, the inauguration of the new governor. But I personally plan on visiting Tallahassee, I believe, January 9th, and meeting with our legislative delegation. And there's two items I want to bring to their attention that our leadership team has talked about. And you know, there are many platforms, Nefect and Small District Council, and you know, have adopted platforms that deal mainly with funding and that type thing for districts. But there's two specific things that we want to talk to our legislative delegation about that would benefit Putnam County specifically and other counties also, and that is requesting funding for wraparound services for our students who live in, like, like our students who live in a low-income, low socioeconomic district. And that's something we're gonna talk to them about. Ms. Odom has actually collected a lot of data for us to show how Putnam County, as we all know, you know, our students are at a disadvantage as far as a lot of their needs and all. So we want to, you know, address some of those basic needs that we need to look at so we can educate them. So, you know, we, we receive funding and all for all students, but we want to especially look at what can we do for those students that need that extra help, because we think that's gonna help elevate our county.
And it's the wraparound?
Wrap, for additional funding for wraparound services, right. Secondly, and I think I've brought this to you before, but actually, we're gonna have a meeting, a, a public meeting tomorrow and talk about a new concept that our instructional department, led by Laura France, is putting together, and that is a public services academy. And we are gonna talk to our community and our other governmental entities to see how we can meet the needs of our local district as far as firefighters, EMTs, law enforcement, medical health sciences, medical skills and that type thing, and again, training teachers. But we are looking at putting together an academy where we can help fill those needs right here in Putnam County. But again, with any, any kind of CTE program, it takes a lot of money upfront. So we're gonna be approaching the legislative delegation to see if any kind of funding that would help us with some of these startup costs, and there's some, some equipment involved, which I'll tell you about later, but that's the things that we're gonna need to have to get this academy off the ground. Hopefully, we're looking for next year. So again, along with advanced manufacturing, welding, and everything else that we're doing, this is one more thing that we can do to help benefit the citizens of Putnam County. So I'll keep you posted on that. Second thing I want to talk about, and you saw this in the paper, was the expansion of Cambridge to Kelly Smith Elementary. And again, that's part of our overall concept of expanding acceleration opportunities for all of our students. As you know, last year, we expanded Cambridge to Crescent City, and we've created the collegiate high schools, Interlockin High and Placa High. This is an opportunity, though, along with James A. Long, we also want to give the students of Kelly Smith the opportunity for a Cambridge-type education. And the question might be, why Kelly Smith? Well, we actually, district-wide, provided an assessment, a universal screener, if you will, called the COGAT, and the students of Kelly Smith, we have found, would benefit most from a more rigorous curriculum such as a Cambridge. And again, that doesn't prevent other students from transferring there, but again, we have a great program at James A. Long, and again, we want to expand that and create another location here in Placa where we can raise the level of instruction across our county. So we're very excited about that, and you'll be getting more information about that, but the time to start making this available for parents and students is now. So you'll be seeing some advertisements going out. We actually filmed a commercial this week, and it should be going out over our, through our media services, trying to inform parents about the application process. Just a reminder, January 15th, we do have one school board meeting in January, and that is our first night meeting, 6 o'clock, and we'll have a superintendent's advisory meeting at 5 o'clock immediately before that for the central area. And also, I want to point out that Mr. Bowlen and myself, we're very fortunate to attend, to visit Apple Headquarters in Cupertino, California, last week. And one of the leadership organizations in the state actually provided us the opportunity, at no cost to our district, to go out there and just, to see some of the advancements in education through technology. And I tell you, we're doing a great job here as far as technology, but there's a lot of things that are out there in the world that we could take advantage of. And one thing that we have in the plan, and I'll give you more information later, we are actually planning on developing a mobile STEM lab that, we're actually looking at purchasing a vehicle that can go to different schools and provide students a highly technical education and provide a lot of technology that we've seen. But again, this is gonna help meet the, the needs of our students as far as STEM opportunities. So I'll keep you posted about that, but that's something that's very exciting to me.
Okay.
Rick, can I say a few things? I appreciate the fact that you guys utilize empirical data and data you had assimilated to show the justification on the Cambridge program.
Right.
That makes all the difference in the world if you can find where it's gonna be most effective. And I mean, you would do that with, with anything I see the instructional department working with now. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that. And the STEM application on the, looking at the lab is much like the old speech wagons that we used to send around the county to have speech labs. But if you've been to the school board meeting and seen the stuff that Rick's talking about, it is absolutely incredible, the opportunities for kids. And you don't have to spend $5 million, you can, you can meet the needs of the whole district with one mobile lab. So that is something I really appreciate you looking into.
Yeah, that's a good use, good way we can use our money by having a mobile lab going to different schools, having a certified teacher on that lab, mobile lab. So I'm very excited about that. I've seen that in action in other places, like Mr. Buckles mentioned.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing? Mr. Buckles had asked for a discipline workshop, and I just want to bring that back to your attention, at what point you might want to do that, or is it up to the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Superintendent, I had asked that. We, we do it some time ago, but we had so many other things with, with, you know, the state law coming down on security and things that, you know, I said we'll wait until after Christmas. So I would say sometime in, in February.
Okay. We can do that.
We're gonna have a lot of questions, a lot of people in schools. I mean, some people are frustrated. I, I saw some bad examples for, in, and with, in that, in that closed meeting we had this morning of how parents modeled behavior that caused the kids to do the same things that really didn't look well. But be that as it may, that's typical, and I think that our, we've gotta find a way to tighten it down. And I, I think that we, we all feel that way. So we're gonna work with you, and we're gonna try to work together to see what we can do to help the teachers.
Well, maybe at the 15th meeting next month, if, if you have any specific things that we could provide, and then we could schedule a meeting for February?
That'd be fine.
Okay? Just make a note.
Prior to us closing out, Mr. Thielbow did come in, and he wasn't here for the presentation for the Computer Science Week for the Foundation of Rural Education Excellence, but would you please just come up here, just so we could applaud you, and, and if you could get a picture of him, please?
Maybe Ms. France can come present.
And show the check.
I think we're gonna superimpose him on the group picture, right?
We had a terrific kid this morning.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you, Joe.
And again, Mr. Buckles has already said to all of our principals, to all of our administrators, to all of our teachers, to all of you bus drivers, school food service, you're doing an excellent job, and we do wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. At one of our meetings, I think two meetings ago, I did announce that I was going to the doctor for a biopsy, and I was not worried about it, and I'm still not worried about it. On the 27th of this month, I will be having surgery, but you need to know that I'm in good hands. And I'm talking about not only the hand of God, but I have some of the best surgeons in the business. Dr. Caravella, Dr. Sosman, and Dr. Sullivan will be taking care of me, and I know what the outcome is gonna be. So if you remember, on the 27th, it will be at 9 o'clock, just remember me in your prayers, and I will appreciate it. God bless each of you. And the meeting is adjourned.